Yep, it's thinking. Okay, we're recording in closed session.
Just, we're now in closed session. We'll go around the room and identify ourselves. We'll start with Justin.
Justin Schultz.
Joanna Lumbergh.
Leanne Differ.
Mark Schumaker.
Carmen Shea.
Scott Dell.
Tim Whitman.
Finn Groby.
Before we get started, I know you guys are gonna get sick and tired of me saying this. But this is a, this is one particular piece of real estate. Let's stay focused on that and try not to deviate from the item that's in closed session. Okay, with that, Mark, you're up.
Okay, this is about the Doris Ferguson estate. It's the ninety-three point zero eight acres. As you go up towards Hitchcock, it's that property that we come to.
What was the number, ninety what?
Ninety-three point zero eight acres. It also has a house on it. We've had two appraisals done. Teen Farm Management did the land. That came up to nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Midwest Ag did the house, and that came up to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the total is one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I know one of the last times that we heard Chad Gravy did a presentation on this and kinda the overall scheme of what, what we're doing at Hitchcock and how this fits in. And I just wanted to update you on this. There's, I know there was some, some interest in providing funds towards this from the Board of Supervisors. We also have the ability, if that's not possible at this time, we have the ability to approach the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation and request that they potentially pay for it, but then we're gonna be paying interest on that amount as well to pay them back.
How do you, how do you spell that last name, Mark?
Ferguson. F.E.R.G.U.S.O.N.
Mark?
Yeah.
Is the house up for sale right now?
No.
Okay.
It's part of the, it's gonna be part of the deal.
So, okay. Has someone mentioned that it might be coming up for sale?
No, they've actually kind of entered into like an agreement with us or letting us use that house while they're not using it for summer interns to actually use that residence since no one's using it right now.
Would they have an estate sale or something?
Are they gonna have an estate sale?
Oh, did they?
No, I don't think so.
The house is fully furnished and something?
I'm not sure what they have in the, if they took stuff out of the house or anything.
Do you have anybody in there?
I don't, we don't have anybody in there right now. So they just said we, we have the ability to use that residence for like summer interns and stuff that we have up at Hitchcock.
Okay, I didn't know if you had somebody in there or not.
No, I don't think so.
So.
And the plan is, I mean, we're, we're getting documentation and all the information together to write a REAP grant to replenish some of the funds that could be expended on this due, and I think it was up to six hundred thousand dollars is what we're planning to write a REAP grant for.
So that, could that reimburse the county?
Yeah.
Justin's pulling this up so I think we can get a. What is, where, where's all their ground at, Mark? So here's, that's just the house.
That's the house and the parcel that goes with it. That's like two point one one acres.
So it's all this, right?
Yeah, if you keep zooming out, it's pretty big.
Now, there's a home just right below it.
Yeah.
Right there, that, see that?
Yeah, no, keep going. It's a lot more than that.
Oh shit. Oh, yeah.
It's actually, this parcel, this parcel, this goofy parcel here, and this parcel and that parcel. And then the, where the yellow house is, yeah.
Basically all this minus this house.
Yeah, minus that house and.
This little.
That, yeah.
I believe that's the cemetery, isn't it?
That is, that is a cemetery, yeah.
Okay, and then by her house, there's another house below it that is not included in this.
No, that's not included.
This.
Yep, that.
Is that a separate parcel?
That was her son's.
Oh, yeah.
And he'd sold when he got.
Is that a separate parcel?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
And then this is the other house.
Yeah.
Who currently farms the ground?
Um, Collins.
Mike?
No, Lonnie and Larry.
Go through around Lonnie guys.
They've been farming it for years. And we're working with Mark Ferguson. They're gonna try to enroll a bunch of this in CRP. So, I mean, cause the county owned it, we, there's no way we could enroll it in CRP, but you can, I mean, it can be transferred to the county, so there would be some, some revenue coming off of it with the CRP. And then the remain, I can't remember the exact acres, but then the remaining would be put into alfalfa.
Okay. You remember the deal you made with Wayne Rayburn?
Yeah.
Is that a possibility, anything like that?
What was it again?
Like, there was a five year, ten year period? I, I am, I just, this, possible funding for this. Okay, that's what.
I mean, the funding would be.
There was a funding deal, I, I don't know if anybody was on the board. That's why I'm asking.
No, I don't, I don't know if it'll be the same deal like that, but it'd be, we'd be trying to get a majority of it put into CRP. So you get those payments over a ten year period.
We would or they would?
We would. But they have to enroll it into CRP. And then the rest of it would be put into alfalfa and you would cash rent that out.
Why do you want this property, Mark?
It's adjacent to Hitchcock. It's in the Les Hills. It fits into his plan, Chad Gravy's management plan, and potentially it was a location to start our bison herd up there for grazing.
What's the recreational opportunity for the residents for this parcel?
Um, for this parcel, there's some pretty good ridges in there that you could incorporate trails into this. So it'd be more hiking trails.
So there'd be trails in with the bison?
Potentially, yeah. I'm asking you to run.
As long as you run faster than the person behind you, you're fine.
County Wellness Program.
Bison Five K.
So, Mark, have you got any kind of funding idea of what those will bring in?
Uh, like I said, the REAP grant, I think it's around six hundred thousand for the REAP grant is what we're to write.
On the CRP?
Um, I'd have to see how much he was planning on rolling in CRP.
Cause what is that, about forty acres total? What do you get?
What's the CRP payment? How much you need?
Last I knew, it was around two hundred and forty dollars an acre.
Two hundred and forty bucks an acre, there you go.
Okay, but I, now we need to know.
You need to know how many acres.
Till, tillable.
Let me see if I can find it.
Has there been any discussion with the Ferguson's of what they want?
What they want, as far as money wise? One point one seven five million.
That's what they want?
Yeah.
That house is assessed at ninety thousand. Not that it matters a hell of a lot, ninety-five actually.
Well, what was the assessment?
Well, then there's something for two hundred thousand.
Appraisal came back in that.
Appraisal came in at that.
Oh, okay.
With the.
She's on, she's been there since the early sixties, I think.
Did you keep the house, Mark?
We would keep the house, yeah.
So we're gonna have a house for all of our workers at Hitchcock?
Potentially, yeah. Well, seasonal work, not all of our workers. Sorry, my eyes went goofy on me this morning, this weekend.
CRP payments to cover the expense.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that was conservation.
Have you been in the house?
I have been in the house.
Okay. That was years ago.
I can get back to you on acres that we'd be having CRP and.
It was forty, fifty, like forty-six acres, wasn't it? Seemed like we talked about this on another meeting.
How soon do they wanna know?
Um, we were planning on, it would be nice to have a purchase agreement done or a letter of intent, just to let them know that we're interested and we have a purchase agreement, but our plan is closing by the end of October.
So the ninety acres, if you take the two acres away from where the house sits, we're paying ten grand an acre for that. About, about, Mark, a little more than that, I guess a little more. Comfortable with that, man?
Yeah, is there any timber up there?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
It's on the outside.
Thirty, thirty some acres of timber.
It's basically up here. So all this, you can see this land, all this.
That's the till.
That's your farm. And then this is the timber on the ridge. But this is a big, steep kinda hill. You guys recall, like, as you pull into Hitchcock, you look down off to the left, that's where it is.
Forty-six point one one crop acres.
So you got a combination of REAP that can pay for six hundred thousand of it for crop land?
Yeah. Are we pretty confident of REAP grant?
Five, timber.
Yeah, Chad seems to think so. I had a conversation.
Okay, and then, and then we get money back from CRP and alfalfa, right?
Right.
If Len's numbers right, two hundred and forty dollars an acre, that's a substantial amount of money.
So then.
On forty acres, forty-six acres.
Yeah, eleven thousand, five hundred?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
I thought he said something about ten. What's that? I thought he said something about ten. Oh, I guess ask you if it was ten thousand dollars an acre for farm ground. Is it more like twelve?
Yeah.
Do we have any funds set aside in your accounts for land? Wasn't there a land?
We have some land acquisition funds, yeah.
Is that what you intended to use this for?
We could, yeah.
Three hundred and sixty thousand.
How much?
Three, about three hundred and sixty. Where'd that, where'd that money come from, Mark?
In land acquisition? I don't think we had that much.
Uh, just sent to us today.
Yeah.
All right, maybe, maybe I'm.
No, that's not his fund.
I thought it was, it was more like, maybe I have to look and see.
I thought you guys had a fund or something like that.
I mean, kinda the way I understood it, just having a conversation with Chad Gravy, was that we would, we would basically be, the money to make the acquisition happen, he was gonna do a combination of REAP grant, we were gonna cash rent the farm park ground out, and then he was gonna pursue some other money, and I don't remember what he said that was. Essentially, we're just basically getting it to get paid back.
That County Conservation Land Fund, it has two hundred and ninety-five thousand in it.
That sounds right.
So we're, uh, I think that, that gets divided out. I mean, you have the total amount, but we have categories within that, I think. I don't think we have two hundred and ninety in land acquisition, but.
Well, I'm just telling you what the auditor's office give me.
Well, auditor's office is not always correct, so.
Well, that's no kidding. Hey, wait, wait, let's don't get, let's don't get off of that. This could be public someday.
I guess the, the question is, are we, are we comfortable with doing this and then being reimbursed?
Nope.
From this, this board member's perspective, if Mark can, the maximum you can apply for is six hundred thousand for a REAP, is that right?
Yeah.
So even if you got four hundred, you know, we're looking at about seven hundred and, about eight hundred thousand dollars of county dollars. We have, this is just Tim Whitman talking now. We've got three point, almost three point six million in gaming that's not committed to anything.
Right. We also have land fund that was not committed to anything either.
We have land, about five million, oh yeah, five point, almost five point five million in that.
So, I mean, that was, yeah.
I will say that Conservation in Hitchcock has been waiting for this piece, and Doris was pretty adamant about it going to them, correct? She has been for thirty years.
Yeah, no, Chad's, Chad's done a really good job with relations. My whole life owners up there.
Well, I think, I mean, what's nice about this is that she's, they're, I shouldn't say she, she's passed now, but family's willing to let us buy it at the appraisal value, you know, and they could, they could go to market, they could do what they want and try to get more, and they, they, I don't know.
That was her mom's wishes. Doris really wanted it to go to the park.
This board has worked really hard. We haven't spent those gaming dollars. We've been really conscious of our budget. It only takes one election and this whole shit can, this whole thing can change. I don't think we pass this up.
You don't think we pass it up?
Right.
I agree. I think it needs to, however we finance it, that's why I was asking about the previous finance from another acquisition up there.
I mean, the county attorney has about six hundred thousand in drug forfeiture money?
Oh, yeah, he, he won't have any problem with that, yeah.
I don't think you can, yeah, I mean. Is it? Yeah, but that has to be law enforcement.
I thought he gave it.
Yeah.
What, were you saying yes to me or it has to be for law enforcement purpose, or he can't use it for conservation?
I believe there are restrictions on it.
There's restrictions on it.
What, put one of our peace officers from your, from your range there, and then it's a law enforcement.
Mark, I mean, you didn't bring up a budget deal, which you did, yeah. No.
What, so you were gonna get, or someone said so much from REAP?
Six hundred thousand. Six hundred thousand dollar grant from REAP.
Okay, and then the Iowa Heritage Foundation would.
Well, they were.
Would they do part of it or all of it?
They would do all of it, but then we have to pay them back.
No, I understand.
Plus interest, and I don't know what interest is now.
So, but they won't do part of it? They ju, they'll just do all of it?
Well, they're different parcels, so maybe they could do all of it of parcels, right, or not?
Well, okay, so you don't know what the interest is?
Five.
Five and a half.
Yeah, at least.
You think it is?
Mm-hmm.
It seemed like when they presented it at those conferences that they were lower than the. Well, they probably just go with what the, what they're, what they can borrow at.
Well, they just go with the market.
We've done one with them before where they were gonna use their own bank and we found something cheaper here for a previous acquisition, but yeah, it's at least four to five and a half percent.
How do you feel about it? Like, what do you think?
Um, you know, I mean, it's, when they come up, you about, it, it's tough because they always come up boom, 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 or they come up at the same time or something happens, so. But when they come up, it's, it's hard not to pass and not do it, just because we've been focusing on this for.
Thirty years.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, I, I am not in favor of borrowing money from Heritage Foundation and paying them back.
No, I understand.
No, I'd rather borrow from us.
Scott, but I think we should have the information on everything that's available.
I agree, Scott.
You know, I mean.
I agree.
I'm not saying go that way. I'm just saying we need to look at all the options. Cause, so is there any other funding sources out there?
Yeah, Chad, Chad has some that he's looking at, so yeah, there's some out there.
The conversation I had with Chad on last Thursday at Rotary was, cause it just came up in conversation that he felt that he could make us whole over a period of time. So we basically, the board would make the, we'd be the, we'd be the bank, you know, we'd buy it, and then Chad was gonna go after REAP grant, and then he had, he talked about the cash running, and then he also mentioned, I can't remember what he said, it's driving me nuts, but he made it appear to me as though we can become whole. Um, it might take some time, but at least it has a payback on it, whatever that is.
So if you go, I just wanna make sure I'm correct, I'm not the farmer here. So if we go the CRP route, we won't have a farmer.
Right.
Right?
Right.
We'll just, we'll just get the
earnings.
The, whatever the CRP formula is, and that, they would have to, Ferguson's or the estate would have to sign up for it, and it'd be good for ten years.
Ten years. Ten years, ten years.
Is that number, is that number fixed?
What did they pay for CRP?
Yeah, ten.
Yeah, so.
Depends on the quality of it.
The, the dollar amount, let's say it's two hundred and forty an acre, is that stay that way, or do they?
Oh, yeah.
Take that up and down for ten years?
So.
Talking to shy of a hundred thousand dollars and forty acres.
Pardon?
Forty acres and tillable.
Forty-six.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if they'd do the entire, well, yeah.
Well, listen, what if, what, if we put it in hay, what would that be worth? Does anybody got a, any kind of a wild ass?
We'd use it, we'd use it to feed the bison.
No, no, I'm serious.
You're right. We would, wouldn't we?
That's what we do down in Carston.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we sell some of that too. I mean, we're not gonna use it all off that for.
And if we put C, C, put it in CRP, we're not gonna put bison on there for ten years, right?
Uh, you probably can't.
Well, it's probably gonna take us that long to even get to that point anyway, right?
I mean, but, yeah, it's gonna take a while for the bison to come, so.
By that point, all you guys are gonna be old enough, you'll never see the bison up there.
You're talking to yourself.
I don't.
I'll be around.
I'm young.
I'm young. I'll be here.
I would, the only thing I would say, I'm really excited that we have this opportunity to expand Hitchcock. Don't get caught up on the, on the yearly possible revenues you can get out of that, cause we still have a house we have to maintain, we have to pay utilities on it. So if, if we can purchase this property and have the CRP take care of the maintenance of the house, I mean, hell, we're great shit.
Is somebody gonna live in the house?
Yeah, Mark.
Okay, so what if we took that piece, I'm just throwing it out there. And sold that house and that piece, Mark?
What's that?
What if we sold the house and the piece? That isn't as exciting and romantic as the other way, but that's certainly a revenue fund.
You'd have to find the right person in there, and you have one more land owner right there that would, we'd have to deal with as far as the land maintenance, any buyer, any kind of activities that we do in there. Bison go on there.
That's the house?
That's the house. It's all brick.
I mean.
Looks like it's.
That'd be a good, like.
Looks like it's ADA compliant.
Yeah, I don't know what's over here and back, but, I mean, would that be a good cabin?
It could be, yeah. Yeah.
It's a ways away from the park.
Not really. It's right at the entrance, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, you go up there, the entrance is like.
The entrance is right here, or.
Right by the.
Right here. This one.
Right there, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah.
But pretty much once you turn that corner, it's all parked once you go up there.
I mean, you basically feel like you're on the park.
So what do we need today?
The nod?
Well, we, we can't vote on it.
I, I understand that. I just.
I think that, I mean, if you want, each one, each one of us would like to state your, um,
beliefs.
Approval, approval, disapproval. I think, I think that could probably happen.
This board member's in favor of it for, to pending the right funding, okay?
What, what do you mean by that?
Well, we gotta kinda gather up all the funding and figure it all out, right?
What if we don't get REAP? Do we say no?
You won't know about REAP until August.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, so what, yeah, what is the timeline for us?
REAP is August fifteenth, and you know the sixteenth, September sixteenth?
No, I mean, as far as for the, the timeline for the Ferguson estate.
Um, I think it'd be probably, it'd be wise to get a purchase agreement in place at least um, as soon as we can, or a letter of intent. Um, and then we identify in that that there'd be a closing on or before October thirty first.
I mean, do we, you, you know, and do we need to get into the, the property and see if there's asbestos in there, or um, is there some due diligence we need to do?
We can do that, yeah. I mean, I doubt there's gonna be any issues in there.
Nineteen sixty-three.
Yeah, we could definitely check.
How long those doors?
Probably lead paint and, depending on if it's linoleum and such, possibly asbestos.
Or if they had a remodel, I don't have any of that stuff for.
Sorry.
It is nine fifty-four.
I mean, the Ferguson, I don't know, letter of intent would probably be good to, um, see what they're, if they want it done tomorrow or this year, if they want.
They still want to close. They want to close by, by the end of the year, and we're suggesting October, October.
Okay.
Closing October thirty first.
And then, and they.
On or before October thirty first.
Is there an attorney representing them, or?
I think they're McGinn, through McGinn.
Okay.
So will they be able to enroll that? Do we want them to enroll that into?
CRP prior, yeah. I'm, I think Chad's working with them to get, to work all that out, to see if they can get it enrolled.
I kinda hate to see that myself, because if we can't put the buffalo in the.
Buffalo owner gonna be here in ten years. There's no way the buffalo are gonna be here in ten years. It's gonna be longer than ten years.
We just go over there to Hancock and fix some on?
Okay, you can write the check for the fence and everything, maybe get it installed around the entire park.
I'll put a fence up around it.
That's, that's outside of this discussion, I think.
Okay.
Scott, what's.
You're talking about fence in the whole park eventually? The whole park?
One of his plans, he had it all the way down to Old Lincoln Highway.
Holy shit.
All the way around.
Scott, what's your, you wanna give your opinion on this?
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need to get it done. I mean, if it's gonna be, you know, sometime, you know, later this fall.
Then, what, what's, what's your feelings on this?
Well, I, I think, it sounds like everybody's kinda already wanted that. My only problem is these, like, these houses over here by the parking. When I was on the first time, we had, we'd buy and then come up for sale. And I, I don't know, we got more of this, we're gonna buy it?
What's that?
Have we got more of this, we're gonna buy?
Um, hang, hang on, we're, um.
Just this one piece right now.
Yeah.
For closed session purposes.
Yeah, the conservation team has provided us with a um, a proposed plan over the next few years that we can have them come back in and discuss with us if you'd like.
I would like to, yeah.
We're specifically talking about this particular parcel.
Okay. Well, I think it's a good opportunity. And I, I would be like them if I wanted to give to conservation it. I think that'd be a great deal.
How much money does the, your foundation have?
The Pato, I mean Conservation Foundation?
Yeah.
Um, that's probably one area we can get some funding from too, so.
That might be what he said. No, I think that's what he said. That was what Chad said, but he, he was taking into account that there could be other acquisitions down the line.
No, 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 I understand, but I just asked.
But I think that was why I have you.
What? What kind of money do they hold on to?
Yeah, it's probably around two hundred thousand, I think, in.
We, we don't hold it, do we?
No.
I'm.
And a lot of that is invested in endowments.
I'm, I'm, to me, I'm a firm believer in, uh, I, I think this is a great opportunity, and the, the plan that was presented to, to us. I think this nests well with that. I mean, I also just talking with Chad and understanding how the REAP grant could go, and I, I'm in favor of it, so I'm, I'm good with it.
This is, this is the family's, uh, wishes. I mean, that's, that's gotta be something that's
Yeah.
Stated out there, hard and fast, no matter what happens.
Well, I think the fact that they, you know, got the appraisal done, here's the value, here's what they want to sell to us, they're giving us first chance, I mean, I, it all speaks a lot.
They had, they had us do those, those, right? They didn't.
We did the, the. We did the, the teen farmer appraisal, the land, we did that, I think they did the.
House?
House, yeah.
Okay. Who did the house?
Midwest Ag, I think Kelly something did it.
Oh, really? Oh.
See, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm more than willing to move right forward with it, we have gaming revenue that's available, um, I'm not, I wouldn't make a contingent on a REAP grant, I would hope that Mark would work with us and try to get as much money back as possible, however, I wouldn't hold the, um, acquisition of this parcel hostage for that.
No, I wouldn't either, just to be clear.
And, uh, I looked up the property tax on the, on the parcel, on the house, they pay, uh, fourteen hundred and fifty dollars a year in property tax, the farm pays twenty dollars an acre, uh, property tax, so, we're not talking, that's one of the things that's gonna happen when we, when we, if we end up buying this, some people say, there you go, you're taking, paying property, then, we're talking about twenty-five hundred dollars maximum. Counting the house of, at fourteen fifty, and the other ninety acres of ground, that's gonna cost, uh, eighteen hundred, okay, three thousand.
Well, I think the fact that we're keeping it into, you know, if we go down the route of CRP or whatever, I mean, we're not, although the government is buying farm ground, it's still maintaining farm ground, you know, so.
Or we're paying appraisal, appraisal value.
Maybe this ain't appropriate for me to ask, but what's the timeline for turning it into park?
Um, I think you, it'd probably be a park right away, as far as using it, so.
Okay, that's all I needed.
You're talking that.
You can go in and access CRP and hike around in CRP and.
Okay.
There's already potential, there's already trails that go on the site, we would route those so they wouldn't go close to the other houses, adjacent houses, so. But, yeah, no, it's not gonna take long to incorporate this, we already, we already burn on some of the property that has the timber and stuff on it.
Right.
So.
Okay.
So, we, they, the Ferguson's would have to give, um, was it, uh, Wilson's, did you say, who was, did you say Farquhar?
Oh, Collins?
Collins.
So, they would have to give Collins notice this.
By September, yeah, first.
And then, is there, do you have any relationship with Collins?
I don't.
So, is it corn right now?
What's that? I don't know, I'd have to get.
He's a roll trap right now, right?
Yeah.
You guys are starting to age out.
So, probably gonna be, be, I think it was corn last year.
Well, I guess he'd be able to, even if we give notice in September, he'd obviously be able to harvest it.
Yeah.
Ryan, I'd ask you not to contact them yet.
I'm not gonna, I'm not doing nothing, no, I think that's for Conservation to take care of.
I would ask Mark that you get with our legal team and try to get a purchase agreement, at least inked.
Okay.
That references those parcels and, and come back and let the board know where we're at with that, and give us a, an update on how Chad's working with them on getting that enrolled in CRP, even if we want it, do we even want it enrolled in CRP?
Yeah.
We do?
Yeah, Chad wants it enrolled in CRP, he's really pushing that, cause then that, that, I mean, that gets enrolled in CRP and into native habitat, that's one less thing that we have to actually go out and plant, so, it saves us time and money on that aspect.
Mark, can that be burned on CRP?
I think, I think you can do CR burns on CRP, yeah, you can work that into the management contract.
Okay, alright. That'll come up to natural prairie.
You can work that into, to, uh, your management contract. And then with the purchase agreement, I'll probably need to do, you typically do like an earnest deposit.
Or do we do a letter of intent, we can't make a decision here in this closed session.
No, we can, uh, we can in the next, we can after the next.
Tomorrow or next week.
You can give him direction what we want done.
Yeah, he puts together a purchase agreement, the board could come out of a closed session and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement discussed in closed session.
Is that on our agenda?
Today, oh, no.
Just wanna make sure we're, we know the issues and.
Today is discussion and or decision on the purchase or sale of particular real estate, but if you guys wanna wait until you have an actual purchase agreement where we know for sure, this is how much that it, you know, you're gonna pay for it, and when you're going to close on it and all of that, um, you know, any additional terms that you may want, put that off to next week.
I'd, I'd feel comfortable if we had, had a, uh, purchase agreement and a commitment.
I'd prefer to go that way.
Was that right?
I'd prefer to go that way, too.
A commitment from them that they're willing to sell, while we, moving further with it, if they are, sooner the better.
Well, it won't be long if, if, uh, that, once we decide that, that it will be out there, you know, cause if McGinn's then tell Collins and.
Yep.
That it'd be open.
Well, we got an employee starting Thursday and manage that for us, so.
He has, uh, he has a, um, as an attorney, he has a commitment to keep discussions confidential, if he, if he goes out and tells the Collinses about it, then he's breaching his duty to his clients, so we throw him in jail, alright.
I make a motion to go out of closed session?
Second.
I shouldn't have said that, okay, we have a motion in a second to go out of closed session, any other discussion from Mark or Leanne, Mark and Leanne, you got your directions here? Okay.
Thanks, Leanne.
Ms. Lammer, you call, call the role, please.
Supervisor Belt?
Hi.
Groby?
Yes.
Schultz?
Hi.
Shane?
Yep.
Chairman Wickham?
Hi.
Thanks, Mark.
Did you want me to start?
Hey, did you have much for, uh?
Uh, would you let us know when we're out? Hold on, Scott.